I'd like to call the Finance and Law Subcommittee meeting to order. It's Wednesday, September 15th, 2021. And we have several things on the agenda this evening. But before we do that, let's do a roll call. Mr. Fiore.
Present.
And Mr. Souza.
Present.
And myself. Joe Martin, present. First item on the agenda is student activities. We still have none. I'm sure one of these days we're gonna get hit with a bunch. Now that school's back in session. We have a donation from Star Trek?
Star Trek.
Star Trek. I misread it. For...
They wanted you to...
What's that?
They wanted you to misread it.
They want... For a cabinet. Looks like a fairly sophisticated cabinet because its cost is $1,700. And the appropriate memo has been sent to Star Trek thanking them for their donation. So that was the second item on the agenda. Third item is a procurement card update memo attached. Brenda, you may want to explain this.
Sure. At a recent school committee meeting, I believe it happened in the Finance and Law Committee meeting, somebody had brought up to see about getting a procurement card, which is also called a P-card, for possibly a few people in the district so it would not have put out staff members putting purchases on their own personal credit card and then waiting for reimbursement, which can take a little bit of time. So I did go ahead and, of course, this has to be coordinated with the city department, and I ended up sending out an email to the city treasurer's office about obtaining a P-card for Taunton Public Schools. I was told that they were going to be discussing this in an upcoming city finance meeting, and then, once I have any updates, I will go ahead and bring that, all the updates, to the committee. So as of right now, it is in the hands of the city's office, and I'll provide updates as we go along.
Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Moynihan, thank you for that report. Do I... Do we need to... Do I need to testify at, you know, I mean, do I need to contact the Finance and Salaries Subcommittee or the president of the council to ask them, you know, if they need any additional... It's gonna... It's gonna be for the administration, but through this body, I can certainly testify or show up for that particular meeting if necessary and represent the school committee if necessary as its chairman. Just, I wanna try to streamline things because I just don't want it to drag out, and they'll have 75 questions, and to go back and forth four times, I can be there to answer the questions. I'll yield the floor to my colleague, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fiore.
Thank you. Having been the chairman of that body for three terms, I can tell you the usual procedure is if they feel that they need input from the committee, they'll send a notice, and whoever the school committee sends can respond to the notice.
Yeah. Thank you. That's kinda what I was afraid of, to be honest with you, because I figured if I was there, I could answer it.
I would also add that we probably need to identify the people that are gonna have access to this card, and if there's gonna be a max.
Right now, what I did hear from this, the internal finance committee was going to discuss this and then provide us... So I think they have some positions opening up that they posted for a chief financial officer. So I believe they're waiting to fulfill that job and then seeing if this is something that they would okay going forward for the school department. Because it is considered a debt, but again, I did specifically say it was only for a specific amount of people, and it would only be a handful of people if needed. We could start very small, but again, it's now in the hands of the city, and again, I will provide updates as I do get them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from anyone outside the Subcommittee at this point? One more on that. Mr. Demello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I understand Chairman Souza's frustration, because I'm very frustrated at the slow pace of getting a P-card. And I think someone mentioned about credit and so forth. A P-card is intended to pay on receipt of invoice, so there's no extension of credit. There's no finance charges involved. It's to facilitate the work of the school department. We have sat here as a committee before, basically going back and forth about items that have been submitted by fellow employees that are related to their work in the school department that wait months upon months for reimbursement. And that's not the right way of doing it. I understand that we have to work with our partners in government, which I am all about, but I think we need to expedite this and not wait for a new chief procurement officer to be hired, because that could take months. So again, I don't know if Mr. Souza, with his offer of reaching out to whoever needs to be reached out to at City Hall, would expedite this. And again, I want to stress, a P-card is not intended to be an extension of credit. It is a return. Bill comes in, you pay it within 15 days, whatever the terms are. So there's no debt to the city. So that's my two cents. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
One of the things that we used to do many years ago was, we, I don't know what we called the district, or the others, but we used to do that with Manny's Highway. At any given time, a principal, custodian, could walk into Manny's Highway and buy a gallon of paint for $3, and they wouldn't have to take it out of their pocket. It would be covered by the school department as a receivable invoice, and it would be on the next warrant.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to go that route, because I don't think that's the right way of doing business either. I mean, you know, actual P-card in the employee's... And if I may add, we're not looking for 500 P-cards like we have at the university. We're looking for one, maybe two. So Superintendent Cabral, I think, would be appropriate, and Brenda Monahan, Assistant Superintendent Finance. I think that would be sufficient for the entire district that represents 8,000 students plus another 1,000 employees.
But someone from, say, the building department could go to Ms. Monahan and say, "Look, can you authorize this so that I can get it and not have to charge my credit card?"
Sure, sure, sure.
No, I agree with you there.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, let's move on. So that's in the process, and it may be a snail's process, and I agree with Mr. Demello. We don't want to wait till June to put this in place. The creating a revolving account memo attached. Ms. Monahan will pick on you again.
Thank you. So following the Mass General law, there is Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, and that all, that is all referring to revolving funds. A revolving account can be created and must meet the following specifications. Again, this was all brought up at a recent rules Subcommittee meeting about creating a revolving account. So a revolving account must meet the following specifications: the program or activities for which the revolving fund may be expended. This is all dealing with when we decided about hopefully setting up a revolving account for Chromebooks. If a Chromebook has been damaged, and it's almost like that lost book that we have had for many years, so it would be something like that for that account. The department receipts that will be credited to the revolving account, so those receipts are just receipts that you would give a family saying that they have given the city or the school department an X amount of dollars for a broken keyboard. The person authorized to expend from the revolving account, that would be, of course, the finance office under my regime here, and then any reporting requirements the city may impose. And those are that we do the quarterly revolving account updates that we get. So although the revolving account must be created no later than the beginning of a fiscal year in which the revolving fund will begin, you can go ahead, the law specifies that you can establish upon certification by the city auditor at any time during a fiscal year. So again, the law says that we have to go ahead and have those four things happening before a fiscal year starting of the revolving account, but again, it can be established upon certification of our city auditor. Any questions about the revolving account establishment?
Mr. Souza, I see your hand.
The only question I have is, and I have no problem with this, because we've, the 12 years that I've been here, we've instituted a couple of revolving accounts. We've added a couple since the 12 years that I've been here. So this, if I remember right, this has to do with the Chromebooks?
Correct.
It's like a lost textbook.
Thank you.
So do we have to, the policy's in play, because we're gonna be continuing to vote on it, do we have to vote to start one? Is that what you want to do on this? Where are we at with that? Because I understand the policy.
Well, we have to wait for the rules to go ahead and bring that Chromebook policy has to be written, and once that's been approved, then I would go ahead, by authorized by the school committee, to ask for the city auditor to initiate and certify a new revolving account for the Chromebook policy.
So, Mr. Chairman, just drew you to the superintendent. Mr. Cabral, so are we saying that we want to, we want to wait until the policy's initiated, or should we do, could we start the process now to get it moving, and simultaneously once the policy's been to a third reading? Because I think today's the first or second reading.
I don't think anything will prohibit the Finance and Law Subcommittee from making the recommendation of authorizing the Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operations to begin the process of creating a revolving account for fees brought to the school department for damaged or lost Chromebooks.
I'll motion that we authorize the administration to create a revolving account for the Chromebook fees and the Chromebooks.
I can second that, and I'll take Mr. Fiore's question.
Well, one question I had is, I know the city auditor has just retired. Is anyone on board yet, or are they still in the search process?
I have been contacting, I've been having emails with Ann Hebert, and so this is still in place right now.
I know they've had celebration of her retirement. I don't know if she actually left or not.
I would hope that city government continues flawlessly whether someone's retiring or not, you know? I think that that's the problem, and I have also heard the story about the chief procurement officer and the chief financial officer, but I would hope that we continue to have a streamlined government in the meantime.
In the past, when I was...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Where Ms. Monahan is, we put in quite a few revolving accounts, and it was simply a request which probably met this criteria. Then went to the auditor, and she would have... We were never denied one, not aware of. It was always approved. There's a little formality to it, you know, getting it approved and so forth to meet the criteria, but other than that, it was approved. And we would add it to the list. That's why that list has gotten so long. And what you have to do is, because what would happen is, we would get a donation, for example, for Chromebooks. And it's a donation from a private enterprise, and we'd have no place to put the money legally, okay? Because we can't spend the money, it has to go through the city. So we needed a place to put the money so we could then spend it, and we would create a revolving account to reflect that. And everything, in my day, went through the auditor's office. She was the one that permitted us to create a revolving account. And as I said, probably using the same criteria, because that's the criteria we use for that revolving account. So, anyone outside? Carol, you had your hand up.
Yes, once you've exhausted the supply of committee members, it looked like Mr. Souza had something else to say. Nonetheless...
No, I'm fine.
The question in relation to a revolving account is, does this work in reverse? We have, from time to time, talked about items that are on that revolving account list that represent things that no longer exist in the district, like best, for example. And we've talked about removing those things that are no longer appropriate from that list, because they're misleading to the reader. Is it possible to do that?
I'd have to refer back. I'd have to refer back to the Mass General law to make sure that we are following along that, but again, I can look into that for you and provide an update in the next school committee meeting.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. I think Mr. Souza made the motion to Mr. Cabral. Would you read, read, Mr.?
Yeah, I believe the motion was to authorize the Assistant Superintendent Finance and Operations to initiate the process of creating a revolving account for Chromebook fees.
So we have a specific item for that particular motion. My Subcommittee, any further questions?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Thank you, Brenda. Thank you, Mr. Cabral. And thank you. Subcommittee, okay, what else have we got? Bills payable. You'll notice, and you're gonna see this probably for a while, we've got two, one's getting, you know, not getting larger, but one's fairly large and one's fairly small. FY '21 are things that are being paid off the encumbrance list. FY '22 is the current year that we're in. So we have two bills payable. FY '21, we have $8,108.33, as I said, coming off the encumbrance list. In FY '22, we have $242,757.82. Mr. Souza, you're looking at me, it looks like you want to say something.
No, but I'll say something if you want. Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed both warrants, and they are in order, and I'll move that we pay the bills payable warrant for FY '21 in the amount of $8,108.33, and FY '22 in the amount of $242,757.82.
I'll second that.
And Mr. Fiore has seconded. And any discussion from the Subcommittee? And usually, if there's any questions on this, it comes outside the, under the report.
We should take that on the floor, yeah.
So, motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. And finally, a facilities update.
Just a quick one, that, just a quick update on the Alternative High School Accelerated Repair Project report. We are receiving, we just received our first shipment of windows, so hopefully, in the next week or so, we'll be receiving second and third shipment by the next week. The contractors are working now prepping the windows, and once the window sills and all the casings, and once the windows do arrive, they have said that they will be placing additional crews on site to install the windows. So hopefully, again, I don't want to say it or jinx us, but hopefully, we will make it a little bit earlier than the targeted date in November. So again, I'll keep providing updates as they come available.
I did hear the building commissioner last night at the council meeting, and we can all understand this, there's a shortage of glass. It's one of the problems we're encountering, because all of these windows that are going into Kohan are pretty much, they're not a standard window you'd buy off the Home Depot or something. They're all pre-made individually to fit the space they're going in, and there's a shortage of glass, which is causing the problem, or exacerbating the problem even more. So hopefully, that will catch up in the next month or so. Any comments on the facilities? I have one question. With all the rain we've had, how are we making out in our schools? I know roofs have always been a problem.
I'm happy to say, after all these years, I think I'm going into my fourth year as the Assistant Super, and we have had, every time it rains, it floods at the Alternative High School. And so with persistence of people and helping out, we finally have two working pumps. We bought, we have a berm up there, and one of the worst rainfalls, we were dry as dry can be. I don't want to jinx us, but I'm very excited to say that things have been holding off very well, especially in the two, in the school that normally floods. So overall, so far, so good.
Do we have a generator there?
We do.
Yeah.
Anything else under facilities? So...
Motion adjourned.
Gee, that was quick. A motion has been made. Do I have a second? Motion made and seconded. To adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. All right, we're gonna switch.
Okay, call the meeting to order. If you could please rise for the pledge.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars threw the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and grant your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. And we're gonna have to have a moment of silence. We have four individuals who were, that need to be recognized. First one is Mrs. Margaret Hardson, who passed away on September 1st. She had six children, one of which was our beloved athletic trainer, Christine Currit. The next is Marsha Mitchison, I apologize. She lived in Mattapoisett. She was a teacher at the Mulcahy School. She was known for being a passionate teacher and sharing her love of literature with her grandchildren and students alike. She came to Taunton to finish out her tour duty as a teacher, and spent some time, she was the vice principal of Baxam School for a while, and she retired from the Mulcahy Elementary School in 2013. The next individual is Amanda Downey. She was the, she passed away at the age of 43. She is the niece of Isa Rodriguez, the principal at Martin Middle School, and also the cousin of several of our teachers in the district. Kristy Sanders was at Friedman, Tara Gardett, who was a teacher at Friedman, and Crystal Torres, who is a teacher at Taunton High School. And the last one, Adelaide Rizendis. She is the grandmother, she died at age 92 on September 10th. She is the grandmother of our own Elizabeth Palowski, and I'm sorry, Nate, for your loss also. So please remember all these... Somebody else?
Can we also add Frances Gay to that list? Frances was a high school teacher for many years. I had him as a teacher and a colleague.
Yeah, I thank you very much.
He passed away recently at age 94.
Okay, so our thoughts and prayers go out for all these people and for their families, and we express our deepest sympathy to all of them. Moment of silence. Do the roll call, Mr. Souza. Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Palowski.
Here.
Mr. Fiore.
Present.
Mrs. Fagin's present. Mr. Martin.
Present.
Mrs. Almeida.
Mr. Demello.
Present.
And Chairman Souza.
Present.
And Mayor O'Connell.
Present. Thank you. Approval of the minutes from September 1st, 2021?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. This evening, we have members of the Student Advisory Committee with us, and that is Aracili Alisea, Ava Brooks, and Natalie Duncan, and I believe Aracili is going to give us a report tonight.
My name is Aracili Alisea. I'm a senior at Taunton High, and I'm speaking on behalf of a standing president of the Taunton High Student Advisory Committee. Taunton High has had a successful transition back into a fully in-person learning this year. The entire community came from a half-hybrid, half-remote, it kind of choose-your-own-learning pathway last year, to kind of just fully throwing everything back in. A lot of the eighth graders and a lot of the ninth graders really did not know the school, but the entire school came together and was able to incorporate some of the clubs and all of the older kids to help show the younger kids around the school and help create different schedules with, as, while also changing around the guidance counselors and everything. And of course, that's all at the regulation of our new principal, Mr. Holcomb, who has really taken charge of his new position and has been a really active member of the Taunton High community, going out to different clubs and meeting all of the kids, and also the different sports teams and everything that's been going on. So everything at Taunton High for this season, in the fall season of our school year, has been pretty successful so far. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Excellent job. Glad to hear that the new year is off to a good start.
Madam, may I just, a point of privileges for a second. I'd just like to, you ladies are all new to us, so I'd like to thank you on behalf of all of my colleagues on the committee for volunteering to serve on the advisory council, and then Aracili, I'll get the name right before the end of the year, I promise. I apologize. And who is it? Nicole Drake is the two co-chairs that will be coming here to deliver the message every meeting. So thank you for volunteering to do that, and have a good year, ladies. Thank you, Madam Ma'am.
Madam Ma'am.
Thank you, yes.
I just want to add to the positive comments that this young lady just gave. Having four grandchildren at the high school, I see nothing but smiles when they're out of class, but, but no, seriously, things have worked well for them, and I appreciate that. I appreciate what Mr. Holcomb is doing, and I think things at the high school are doing well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Okay, public input, Mr. Souza?
No public input, Madam Ma'am.
Okay. Moving on, Taunton High School graduation rate presentation. Mr. Cabral, Superintendent Cabral.
Is that gonna be up here?
Yes.
I don't want to be part of the show.
Thank you, Madam Ma'am. I don't recall which meeting the conversation was brought up where there was discussion regarding the special education graduation rates. So, but I do know after the meeting, I did speak with Julie Mulrooney, Director of Special Education, and her team, which consists of Amy Moynihan and Jennifer Mullin, who oversee our pre-K through 7 special education department, to put together a presentation that they could share with the committee to show the outstanding work that has taken place at the high school throughout our school system, because we do have an alternative high school as well, and we do have students who attend specialized programs. So they will walk us through the process of understanding how well the Taunton Public Schools, how well the high school is doing, and how well we are doing when compared to like schools and when compared to all schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So without further ado, I'd like to welcome Director of Special Education, Julie Mulrooney, to the podium, as well as her team. Don't be shy, Jen, you can come up too.
Nice to see everybody. So as Mr. Cabral said, the Special Ed Parent Advisory Group did a presentation on June 16th where they spoke about the special education graduation rate, and they brought it as an area of concern, and asked, "How can we do better with it?" Just kind of a little bit of background, in 2016, Dr. Hackett told us that we needed to work on improving the graduation rate for Taunton Public Schools. That became the charge of the district. Mr. Cabral has continued with that charge as well, so we've worked very hard to improve the graduation rate. One of the challenges, I think, that the CPAC may have had when looking at the graduation rate, is not really understanding how the data is presented on the DESI website. So as a result of what they presented, it appeared that we were not making progress, but... But thanks to Amy and Kristin Keenan, we went through the data and want to show you that Taunton, it is still an area of concern as it always would be, because we want to make sure that our students are getting everything they need in order to meet graduation requirements. But our students are actually doing better than what had been projected at that presentation. And I'm not going to fault CPAC, because the data is extremely difficult to understand. So Amy is going to explain the different types of data and the way that it is presented, and show you that we have made pretty considerable progress over the last few years with our special education graduation rate, so.
Hello, everyone. So one of the things that it's important to understand are the terms. So when we're looking at graduation, all students include all students and all subgroups. That includes students with disabilities. So it's not just gen ed students when they talk about all students. It's all students. And the other piece that the state looks at data is the adjusted rate. And oftentimes, the adjusted rate is a little bit higher than the standard graduation rate. And how that adjusted rate is calculated is that it includes transfers that started after ninth grade or during the following three years. So if a student transfers in 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade, that student is then included in that cohort, whatever that graduation year is. It does include dropouts, but it excludes students who transferred out of district. So that's students that might have been a Taunton student, and then they moved to Brockton or wherever. The adjusted rate also includes summer graduates. So sometimes, students don't meet graduation requirements by June. They need a little extra boost in the summer. So that's why the graduation rate gets recalculated and called adjusted. So those kids that may have walked the stage, they didn't get a diploma, went to summer school, or did whatever they needed to do to get the local requirements for graduation, and then the graduation gets adjusted. The other important thing to remember is when we're looking at the cohorts, it's the number of students. So for example, in 2019, the district cohort, so when I'm referring to district, I'm referring to Taunton High School, Taunton Alternative School, homeschool students that would have graduated, and students placing out-of-district placements. So the district cohort in that 2019 were 93 students with disabilities. When we did the adjustment in 2019, it dropped to 67 students. That's the district. The Taunton High School cohort in 2019 was 57 students with disabilities. And then when it was adjusted, based on what we talked about a little bit ago, it was, we're talking about 41 students. That took me a very long time to understand, so, and a lot of conversation. So this chart represents all students with disabilities in Taunton School District versus all Taunton Public School students. So the orange bar at the top is all students. And remember, that is inclusive of all subgroups. So that's our students with disabilities, our socioeconomic disadvantage, students of color, and so on. The blue bar, which tends to be more on the bottom, is the students with disabilities. Again, that's all our students. So, alternative high school, students that are placed out of district, homeschool students with disabilities that this may apply to. And then the gray bar in the more in the middle is the adjusted. So when you look at the trend, we are making progress overall. So we started off, students with disabilities in 2016 at 59.5, and at 2020, we are ending at 78.6. That's not the adjusted, that's just the blanket line. And then our adjusted is 80.3. But let's look a little bit deeper. So let's just look at the districts. So this is district graduation rate for students with disabilities compared to the state. And this is the students with disability in the four-year cohort. That means that these students took four years to meet state and local requirements. So again, where the students with disabilities for the Taunton District is the blue line, the state is the orange line, and then the adjusted, and remember, that takes out our transfers and things like that, and that's the adjusted. So again, you can see progress. When we look at the adjusted rate in 2016, our students with disability graduated at a rate of 62.1%, and we ended at 80.3%. And that was actually higher than the state average in 2020. The five-year cohort, so these are students, these would have been, so in 2016, those five-year students would have actually been seniors in 2015. So these are students that took one more year, for whatever reason, to graduate. And again, you can see even our five-year students have made some progress. Now let's just look at the high school, Taunton High School. So this is data that is the four-year cohort, again, students with disabilities just Taunton High School. I just want to point out, in 2019, 2020, there was that jump because of COVID and MCAS waivers. Just, I just want to point out that there's a big jump there. But again, when you look at that, we started off at our adjusted rate in 2016 at 64.9. The state average was 71.8. And in 2020, our adjusted graduation rate for students with disabilities at Taunton High School was 95.7, where the state average was 74.9. And then when we look at our five-year cohort, again, at this point, by 2020, we are, our adjusted rate is higher than the state average. So when we look at Taunton High, how do we compare to similar districts? So we pulled the data for districts that we're often compared to, which is New Befford, Fall River, and Brockton. I am proud to say that Taunton High School is the blue line. This is also speaks to how the staff, guidance counselors, associates, building leaders pay attention to what's going on in terms of MCAS. We, they work tirelessly to help students get waivers for MCAS when that was the only thing or the only barrier preventing them from walking across that stage and earning a high school diploma. All the other districts still have that opportunity to do that. So what does the data show? So since 2016, students with disabilities graduation rate has steadily improved. In four years, our percent growth increase for students with disability is 32.1%. So from 2016 to 2020, we have increased our graduation rate for students with disabilities by 32.1% versus the 3% increase for all students. Taunton Public School students with disabilities graduate at a higher rate than similar districts, and Taunton High School students with disabilities graduate nearly at or above the state average when you're looking at the adjusted rate. What have we done? What are we doing? And what will we continue to do? So Judy already spoke of the initiative in 2016, where we began a pre-K to 12 goal. It was on every principal's goal, every administrator's goal, and every teacher's goal to increase the graduation rate, because it doesn't happen within the four years that students are at Taunton High School or at the alternative high school or in an out-of-district placement. It starts in preschool, if not before that, but we only get them in preschool. The curriculum supervisors at the high school are always analyzing the data. They create boot camps for remedial groupings, and MCAS tutoring is created. And the district has always been great to support the teachers that volunteer, the teachers that do it, they pay them for their time and get them the supplies they need. Taunton High School has revamped programs of studies to be more inclusive of students with disabilities, and this has allowed us to have more appeals and waivers, regardless of COVID and what the state put in for waivers due to COVID. But it allows us to apply for waivers when, again, MCAS is the only barrier and the students have made, have met local requirements. Students with disabilities are taught grade-level standards. That's the expectation. We have a co-teaching model, K to 12. We have a transition specialist that also helps with some of those things with our students with disabilities at the high school. We've implemented restorative justice practices for all students to ensure more time on learning, and some examples are peer mediation. We have teaming school adjustment counselors with associate principals, and this year, we now have four school adjustment counselors. Each one is assigned to each house associate. And that allows for, obviously, to work with students with disabilities, but it also allows for gen ed interventions to prevent other flare-ups. And then we also have some additional supports that are for all students. All students at the high school have access. We have High Point, we have remediation room, we have academic support, we have Taunton Virtual Instruction Program, we have community liaisons, and then all the other stuff that's not there. This all contributes to our students with, to walk that stage and get that diploma. So some things that the data doesn't show or tell us, students with disabilities that earn high school diploma beyond the five-year cohort. I'd like to talk about a student whose goal was to get his high school diploma. Students with disabilities are able to stay in school until they either meet state and local requirements or until they age out at their, on their 22nd birthday. This student was determined to graduate and get a high school diploma, and the only thing that was holding him back was an MCAS. He went to MCAS remediation, he went to MCAS tutoring. Even after 18, he would come in for a partial day to take that class over and over again. And he finally got a waiver, he applied for waivers, and finally, he was about to turn 22, and this, he got a waiver because he showed and the school demonstrated the work, how he met the standards. He just could not pass that test, and he got his high school diploma. So unfortunately, the state doesn't look at that data, and those are the stories you don't know about some of our students with disabilities. But our goal is for every student to get their diploma. It's just, sometimes it's just not reported in the data, because they don't go beyond five years. It also talks about the district's attempts to reengage students where attendance has been an issue. So Taunton High School will, after, and Kathy Perry can probably even speak better to this, once students are absent consecutively 10, I believe 10 days, we enact a re-engagement letter, and there's a whole process for that. Some other things that keep kids in school and our students with disabilities, because we know their challenges, right? Learning is hard for them, but we try to keep them engaged. We have unified sports, we have innovation pathways, we have the initiatives to make Chapter 74 programs more accessible for our students with disabilities. And then we just have district initiatives, which includes math-tiered systems of support, universal design for learning, the behavioral code, social justice, instructional coaches, social-emotional learning, and all the other things that the school committee and this district has invested in with all our students. And I think that was it. So, questions?
Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Amy, if you could go back to Slide 5, please. Put your technology hat on, please.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Put your technology hat on.
Let's talk to wear that hat.
This, this is impressive, because I'll tell you why. When you look at raw data, which I'm sure the state has on their website, and you look at adjusted, adjusted data in the cohort groups, in the specific cohort, but more importantly, the adjusted has to do with individual people, students. And when you look at Slide 5, on this four-year cohort graduation rate, at the second year, we've already met, Taunton High is already, the adjusted is already on its way up.
Yep.
And then by the time 2020 comes, that slope increases by one and a half percent. So, kudos to your department, all the principals, and all the special ed teachers, because this, that's some serious progress.
But can I just, sorry. We've got to give kudos to the gen ed teachers, all staff.
Absolutely, I shouldn't say that. I should say all teachers, all teachers.
Because it's not, it's a village, right?
You know, Amy, there's not many people that want to correct me.
I know, I'm sorry.
And I don't mind if you do. And I don't mind if you do. But that's okay, yes. Correct. Everyone that's involved in getting these numbers to where they need to be. So that's probably a better way. But I just wanted to point that out, because as someone that looks at raw data and then has to analyze raw data all the time, that's what I do sometimes in my day job, raw data is just what it is, raw data. It's not, it's not been refined, it's not been understood exactly. Put your finger on A student, B student, C student. So, great job. Thank you for the presentation. I yield, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Mrs. Dougherty?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Much appreciated, and thank you for the report. I remember this school committee made the decision, under the previous superintendent, to focus our energies district-wide, all grade levels, on students with special needs to make sure that they were fully integrated into all of the things that we did to ultimately improve the graduation rates. So I just have a couple of questions. I think that the Slide 10 is very interesting, what the data doesn't show or tell. And each one of those bullets would be worthy of looking at actual data. For example, initiatives to make Chapter 74 programs more accessible. What are those initiatives? How many students with disabilities are involved in those Chapter 74 programs? What are the outcomes for those children who do participate in those programs, for example? So I think that each one of these things, at some point in time, and maybe it's an end-of-the-year report about how it's going, how many students are participating, how many have come forth, what's the success rate in terms of that, that participation? I think that that just enhances the work, the work that you're doing. And lastly, we have had a conversation here from time to time about post-graduation access to higher education. And there had been, and Mrs. Almeida points out that some of our students do participate. For example, Bridgewater has or had a program for special needs students that, provided they meet the criteria for entrance that's established for these programs, that we would have A student or students participating. So could you tell me if there are higher education programs where some of our students with disabilities who have graduated successfully have gone on to higher education?
We can get that data. We do have students that go on to a two-year and a four-year education or a trade school. I think what she's talking about is like that.
Oh, the program at Bridgewater.
The program at Bridgewater, that's, that's like when.
But that, that program, students attend prior to their 22nd birthday? I'm sorry.
That program that you're speaking about at Bridgewater, they attend prior to their 22nd birthday? But we can get data for post-secondary, because we have an indicator that we have to do for the state, where we have to reach out to students once they've left Taunton High, and we can get that data. We're in the process of collecting that data right now.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much. I would appreciate that information. I think that as we continue to emphasize an inclusive environment for all of our students, providing them access to all of our programs, then we want to know what the outcomes are. We want to know how many students are actually participating successfully. So thank you very much, I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for the presentation. Just a very important question. Page one, slide one, please. I guess I just wanted to make sure I understand this. The, I understand what the adjusted rate definition, I think you explained it very thoroughly, district cohort 93, Taunton High School cohort 57. Does the 57 include that 93, or is it plus that?
So, no. So the 93 represents all students in 2019, students with, so that would be your students at Taunton High School, your students at the alternative high school that are coded as seniors, out-of-district students. The 57 is specific to Taunton High School. So it's 93. So it's 93 minus 57 and the rest would be everybody else.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fiore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I know you ladies all know, I'm somewhat familiar with the MCAS alternative assessment because my wife actually graded them for the state for a couple of years. Are there any other proposed changes in the works for either changes to MCAS or alternatives to MCAS to help special needs students reach graduation requirements?
None that we're aware of right now. Everything's kind of the same.
Also, another bit of personal testimony, questions about higher education. My daughter does not have a learning disability, but she has a testing disability. She actually was tested by a neuropsychologist and got some accommodations at Taunton High her senior year. But I can also say with all the colleges and universities that she applied to, a lot of them work on programs to help kids with disability. In fact, my daughter is now in her final year at Boston University School of Theology. Not only does she get accommodations, she's also the head of a club that deals with, with people who have disabilities and affect their learning process somehow. So I can tell you that if children show some promise for higher education but need help, a lot of colleges and universities go out of their way to do it.
Thank you, Ms. Fiore. Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. Oh, do we, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Sorry, I was waiting, I was waiting till the end. I think Mr. Sousa has a comment after? No? Would you like me to do the honors? Okay. So I'll just make a quick comment on slide five, and it's kind of follows up to something that Mr. Fiore mentioned. So as, as wonderful as the data demonstrates that our students are making progress, especially our students with disabilities, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we're talking about actual students. Now, to see, to know that actual students are graduating at a much higher rate and able to pursue post-secondary pursuits at a junior college or a four-year school or going to a trade school, I, I focus more on the stories. And what I also focus on is this year when we were able to utilize the waiver process and able to demonstrate mastery or for students to demonstrate competencies, I believe that's a true indicator of what a child is capable of doing versus how well a child can prepare and perform on a test. So as someone who used to emphasize and push alternative assessments as a middle school principal, I do believe there is more than one way than just a paper and pencil test or now a computer test for a child to demonstrate what they truly have learned throughout their education in Taunton Public Schools. I also would like to use this time to publicly thank and congratulate Judy Moroney, our Director of Special Education, who will be retiring this year. So Judy, on behalf of the Taunton Public Schools, on behalf of the Principals School Committee and the leadership team with whose hand you have held throughout these many years as the Director of Special Education, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for all your outstanding work, especially throughout this pandemic. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you. I appreciate it. It's been an honor to work for you.
Madam Mayor?
Just a little something.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Sousa?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On behalf of the committee, apparently I missed my signal because I think I was supposed to do that. So I apologize, I apologize for that. I get confused and we had too many things going on over here. But I just want to say, Judy, on behalf of the committee, thank you for your years of service and, you know, before, it's amazing how things, people you meet along the way. And I met Judy before she even came to the district. And she was helping myself with some, some after-school extra help, I guess is what it was. I don't even remember at the time. And it comes to find out that, and Judy came here and the rest is history. So Judy, what you've done for kids, all of our students, not only kids with disabilities, is remarkable. So just thank you and have a great retirement. Hopefully I can join you in a few years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sousa. Now we have the, excuse me, Mrs. Almeida?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think we should remind the student council representatives that we don't have a seat for them here because of the COVID, but if they have any questions to ask anytime during any of this information, they're allowed to ask any questions they want. They can participate in our discussion. The only thing is they can't vote. So if they had any questions, I want them to be able to have the opportunity to ask them.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'd like them to be able to be recognized.
Yeah, I...
Well, we did recognize them when they came up for their report.
Right.
We haven't had, this is a new group, so we haven't had a time to give them the full briefing on what they can do and, and, you know, if they have any questions or whatever it is. So we'll fill them in on exactly what, what they could do to help out.
All right. Excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. All right, so now we have the superintendent's report. Mr. Cabral?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So in my report today, I want to give you an update or provide the committee with an update on four items. So I am pleased to share that following the retirement of Dr. Janice Belandra, the Ledy Preschool Assistant Principal Lisa Pereira will be taking over as acting principal of the Ledy Preschool for the upcoming school year. Acting principal for the 2021 and 2022 school year, Mrs. Pereira has been, has served in Taunton Public Schools for over 25 years, holding many positions throughout her tenure. Her career began with the Taunton Public Schools at the E. Pol Elementary School as a second-grade teacher before transitioning to the role of a Title I preschool teacher at the Bonham and Summer Street Schools. Since 2001, she has served as a special educator at the Ledy Preschool in Bonham School. Outside of the classroom, Mrs. Pereira has also been heavily involved in the community, serving as a board member for a Miss Taunton Scholarship for over 25 years. Mrs. Pereira holds a bachelor's degree in early childhood education with dual certification in elementary education from Stone Hill College, a master of education from Fitchburg State College, and a master of special education from Endicott College. Mrs. Pereira is certified in pre-K through six with a concentration in reading and has recently enrolled in the Bridgewater State University Leadership License program. Unfortunately, Mrs. Pereira could not be with us this evening, but we are making plans to introduce Mrs. Pereira before the full committee in the near future. Also want to take another moment to highlight one of our outstanding educators. And we are truly blessed in the Taunton Public Schools to have outstanding administrators, outstanding teachers, as well as outstanding students. One of the outstanding educators slash administrator I'd like to recognize is Mr. Peter Gillen. Mr. Peter Gillen is a social studies curriculum supervisor. He was recently recognized by the Yale University Office of Undergraduate Admissions as a recipient of the 2021 Yale Educator Award. Mr. Gillen has served as the curriculum supervisor for Taunton High School since 2011 and has taught many courses within the department since 2002. The Yale Educator Recognition Program acknowledges outstanding educators from around the world. The program nominated 305 individuals in 2001, 2021 alone. Those nominated represented 38 states and 17 countries. Of the 305 individuals recognized, 50 were teachers and 21 were counselors, and they were selected to receive the educator award, with Mr. Gillen being one of them. Mr. Gillen has made a lasting impact on those with whom he has, he is fortunate to travel, who has been fortunate enough to travel through his department, students and staff. The Yale Admissions Office attributes the exceptional quality of their student body to educators like Mr. Gillen. Students are shaped and guided before attending an institution such as Yale, and it's nice to know or to recognize our outstanding teachers who are helping students achieve their dream of post-secondary pursuits, especially at prestigious universities such as Yale. I'd also like to give, or to highlight something that I'm very proud of, that Taunton Public Schools is being recognized for our work to bring in evidence-based, research-based, high-quality curriculum to our students. So knowledge matters. The Knowledge Matters Campaign will be visiting Massachusetts school districts over a six-week period as part of a national tour, highlighting schools and districts using high-quality instructional materials to improve student engagement and achievement. Massachusetts is being selected for having pioneered the adoption of a new classic curriculum that is intentionally developed to support teachers in delivering equitable, rigorous, and engaging instruction. The Knowledge Matter Tour showcases school districts implementing a curriculum that intentionally builds students' background knowledge of the world as their literacy and numeracy skills are being developed. The first Massachusetts district to be visited is the Taunton Public Schools, and they will be highlighting, or we will be highlighting, our Open Say Ed curriculum. Open Say Ed is being used in 24 districts around the state. It asks students to answer a series of increasingly complicated questions that require an investigative, investigation of scientific, scientific phenomena. Taunton was selected because teachers have been part of the small group of educators from across the nation who piloted this curriculum back in 2018, and they have been instrumental in developing these materials. The Open Say Ed program puts students at the center of the action in the classroom while the routines highlight students' thinking and sense-making. Students make sense of scientific, scientific concepts through discourse and student-led investigations by continually revisiting their ideas and revising as they learn more. The Taunton Public Schools is one of the early adopters of Open Say Ed, and we are proud of our teachers, we are proud of our teachers, along with the special educate, sorry, this pre-K through seven science coordinator, Liz Palowski. We are very proud of their work and their foresight to bring Taunton to the table and for Taunton to be invested and committed in this work. So we hope to continue leveraging this success and to continue to share our success with other school districts and someday in the near future to adopt or implement this similar high-quality curriculum at the elementary level. So I believe all school committee members have received an invitation, as well as the mayor, to, to attend a, a roundtable talk, as well as a lunch with standards work and the group who will be highlighting our efforts, and I hope you can all attend. And if you could please irrevocable VP with Wendy, we will make sure that you have a seated table, but more importantly, that lunch is provided as well. And I'll conclude on a, on a more serious note. It's hard to believe that on Fri, that this Saturday marked 20 years since the tragic 9/11 events. So this year marks the 20th anniversary of the fateful day when our nation's feeling of security, peace, and tranquility were shattered due to terrorist attacks in New York, Washington DC, Shank, in Shanksville, Pennsylvania. In commemora, in commemoration of this event, the district's schools planned age-appropriate activities to highlight the sacrifices of those impacted through these attacks. The activities took place on Friday, September 10. Along with the activities in our school, I also was fortunate enough to attend a city event held at Memorial Park, which I thought was, was done with as much dignity as any event we've held here in the city of Taunton. Some of the events that took place here throughout our schools was a moment of silence at 8:46. I attended the moment of silence at the high school with our 2,700 students and 200-plus staff under Principal Holcomb. Students created artwork focused on first responders as our helpers. There, there were practicing, or practices of our pledge of allegiance in pre-K. We played taps and we had a Spread Kindness Friday with students and staff wearing kindness t-shirts sold at open house, our shirts were positive messages. There were also readings of stories associated with kindness and highlighting first responders. There was a brief selection read over the public announcement system in our schools by educators. There was poems read, and there were also reading and writing assignments which focused on 9/11. We also need to thank our performing arts department, Mr. Corey Beltrum, for his support, as well as Kyle Duchamp, as well as the art director, and also Isabel Tokas for their support of our initiatives. And while many of us vividly recall where we were, remember the wide range of emotions racing through our bodies that day, it is our responsibility to educate our students and to never lose sight of those who made the ultimate sacrifice and those that we lost on that fateful morning. So with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Do we need to accept that report? Can I get a motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
Do you want to accept the report?
Yeah. Motion to accept the report?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Just one comment, if I could.
This has to do with Peter Gillen. And I tell this story to many people, and I'll tell it one more time anyway. Peter used to work for the Gazette, and he used to handle the school department. And we have our subcommittee meetings on Wednesday afternoons or early Wednesday evening. And he'd come in, pen in hand, notepad. "Mr. Martin." "Yes, Peter." "What's hot tonight?" Very, very journalist-type person. "There's hope for you at the Gazette." Look where he is now. But he was always concerned about what was going on in the school department. That was back then, even before he worked for the school department. And since he became a member of the school department, it's been nothing but positive feedback that I've received from students, faculty, and now this award. So I just wanted to mention that. He was a hot ticket. He'd come in looking for information. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Okay, administrative, business, staffing report.
Can we see him place on the floor? Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, non-opposed, so voted? Subcommittee reports, ad hoc subcommittee, Mrs. Almeida?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The ad hoc subcommittee for policy met on September 9. Myself and Mrs. Fagan, President Almond and Mr. Barata, we reviewed the proposed changes to the policy that will be presented to us.
You okay, Greg?
They're attached in the packet today. On policy number ABC, which has to do with our emergency plan, on item number seven, at the end of the sentence, we added, "will be maintained." Other than that, we agreed with that particular policy. It is a new policy for educational equity. We accepted that as written on policy for public comment at school committee meetings. We declined to take the policy submitted by MASC and stay with our current policy because we felt that it limited public input, basically. It limited the amount of time that people could speak and it limited the number of people who could speak, and I think that it's very important. And the committee decided it was very important to allow, you know, our constituency to be able to come and give their views on that. On the special instruction programs and accommodations, that's a new policy. We, no, that was a policy we had and we accepted the updated language from MASC. English language learners, we accepted the new policy there. On equal education opportunities, there's a new policy. We accepted that as written. Our homeless students, we accepted that policy from MASC, the updated language. Educational opportunity for military students, we accepted the new policy. Educational opportunities for children in foster care, we accepted the new policy. Student absence and excuses, we accepted the language from MASC that updates it with the Mass General Law. Policy for exclusions and exemptions from school attendance, we accepted the updated language, again, that updates with Mass General Law. Student activity accounts, update language, we accepted the language from MASC that also updates it with Mass General Law. Especially like when schools close, like for example in Hopewell, what do you do with that money and, you know, Leonard School, those kinds of things. So we went with the policy that was recommended. So that's the report of this subcommittee.
Motion to accept the report?
Especially like when schools close, like for example, in Hopewell, what do you do with that money and, you know, Leonard School, those kinds of things? So we went with the policy that was recommended. So that's the report of this subcommittee.
Motion to accept the report?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to accept the report. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, non-opposed, so voted. Sorry about that, Mrs. Doherty.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We need a motion to also adopt the recommendation.
Right, yeah.
Thank you to, to Mrs. Almeida, Mrs. Fagan, and Mr. Barata. I, I was not able to attend the meeting, so therefore, just a question. So the, under English learner education, is it the updated title and language that was adopted?
Mm-hmm.
So, obviously, I don't have any difficulty with it, except that it eliminates pre-K. So it speaks to all identified English learners in grades kindergarten through 12, and I would assume because we are growing our pre-K programs, that the language ought to include pre-K children who are English learners. So I'd make that recommendation.
Well, I think that Mass General Law did not have that, and this.
I'm sorry, Julie.
They don't include the pre-K under Mass General Law, and that's why we accepted this language. Not opposed to adding that.
So you're.
So I, I think, so, so, so some of these changes on the, on the bottom half of it have to do with adopting to make sure the policies align with the latest of the Mass General Laws. And I think what she's saying is, at this point, that wasn't in the recommendation because it didn't align with the Mass General Laws.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I, what I'm saying is that we do serve as children who are pre-K children and who are English learners. And while Mass General Law addresses K, pre-K programs don't exist universally across the Commonwealth, that we might want to be one step ahead and maybe add an addendum to this language to add our pre-K children, which certainly not going to leave them out of the.
Mix.
Lesson learning, if in fact, they are English learners. I can't imagine that.
I, my recommendation would be the committee to adopt the policy changes as recommended, and then with, then go back and look at this particular IAHEBA and get some input from MASC on that particular item, because they want to make sure it aligns with what the statute is. If the statute does not, the law, Mass General Law takes precedent over local law.
I'm sure Mass General Laws is not going to say to the Taunton Public Schools.
No, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
You cannot serve your pre-K children.
It needs a second look, is what I'm saying on that particular one.
So we certainly can look into it, but I think it's something that should be pointed out.
Right.
Okay, and I think that.
Thank you.
The chair of the committee can commit to that, Mrs. Almeida.
Mrs. Doherty, to change in grades kindergarten, pre-K through 12 on our policy. I think that I would take that as a friendly amendment to whatever we need to do here, only because we do have pre-K here, and hopefully, we will have a pre-K in all our schools. So I think that.
Thank you, Mrs. Almeida.
I would take that as an amendment.
So there's not yet an emotion, a motion to adopt the recommendations of the committee? So is there a motion for that with an amendment?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay.
So, so, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Sousa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have no problem with any of that. Just that, I just want to make sure that, and we can adopt it as, as it goes along. This will be the first reading. The only thing I want to do is, I want to make sure that it goes back. Someone, we take a second look at that to make sure that MASC or someone looks at it, just to make sure that it's, we're doing the right thing.
So the motion is to adopt the recommendations with the friendly amendment?
Right.
It is, but I see Mr. Sousa's concern that he's, would like this addressed further by the subcommittee, is it?
No, just the administration could talk to, we could just send the, you know, talk to Jim Hardy to make sure that it's okay with. I don't want to send it to the legal counsel, I don't think that's necessary. I just want to make sure that we're covering our bases. So I think the motion is fine.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, Mrs. Doherty.
So is the motion on the floor to adopt as recommended and amended, adding the pre?
Yes.
To this, correct.
With, with.
Okay, so motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, non-opposed, so voted. Thank you. Finance and Law Subcommittee, Mr. Martin?
Finance and Law Subcommittee made earlier this evening with myself, Mr. Fury, and Mr. Sousa. First item on the agenda this evening was student activities, which I think is mentioned in your policies. There weren't any, there aren't any, I shouldn't say there weren't any. I'm sure once schools get back into the groove, we will be seeing some activity in that, in that area. Second item was a donation from, I said Star Trek, but I guess it's Star Trek, for cabinet. The appropriate memo has been sent thanking them for their donation, and it's quite a cabinet because it was $1,700.
That's a cabinet.
So we accepted that, obviously. The next item was a procurement card update. And Brenda, I'll let you do justice on this because it gets involved.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. At a recent school committee meeting, it was brought up that, that we could go ahead and contact the city auditor's office, or, excuse me, city treasurer's office in regards to obtaining a procurement card for a few people or a few administrators in Taun, within Taunton Public Schools because we have staff members that have to purchase items and purchase using their own funds, then submitting receipts, card statements to get that reimbursed, which can go ahead and take quite a few weeks. So the committee had asked to see if it can, if Taunton Public Schools can obtain a procurement card. I have sent out a memo to the city treasurer's office, and I was told that they will be discussing this in an internal finance meeting. And, and I believe it is because of an upcoming new position that is going to be filled as the chief financial officer, which they want to wait to see when that person is hired, then to go ahead and give us a direction if a procurement card will be, will be approved for select members of Taunton Public Schools. We're not asking for a dozen, we're asking for a few. And of course, we would identify which staff members would be receiving the procurement card.
And I can verify that that is correct, Brenda. We did have this discussion, and we are in the process of bringing on a chief financial officer and also an off, procurement officer. So what we would like to do is have those discussions, once those people come on board, so that if we decide to move forward with this, we have a very good policy in place with the right oversight and checks and balances for procurement cards.
And one of the concerns that came up at the subcommittee meeting was sooner than later, because obviously, the sooner we get this, the quicker we can use it. And I guess the bottom line is, we don't want this to happen. Well, we want it to happen, but we don't want it to happen like in May or June of, of next year. So faster you can fill those positions or get this going.
We're, we would like to fill them fast, too.
But that's, that was discussed at the financial. The next item is creating a revolving account, and Mr. Sousa made a, a motion to establish a revolving account for Chromebooks. And I believe, Mr. Sousa, that's the nature of your motion?
Yes.
And that was seconded and approved by the Finance and Law Subcommittee. Similar to, for those of you that have been around for a while, similar to the lost textbook revolving account. So it's an account that, you know, I can't find my Chromebook today, and it's due. Well, you're gonna have to pay for it. So we put that money into a revolving fund, and then two weeks later, they find the Chromebook. We give them their money back. So that was approved by the Finance and Law Subcommittee. And finally, well, not finally, but next, we have two bills payable. One is for the encumbrance list, FY '21, if you wish, in the amount of $8,108.33. And the second one is for FY '22, which is for $242,757.82. And both of those motions were made and approved. And finally, the facilities update. Ms. Monahan, pretty much, I asked a question about leakage of roofs or anything, and knock-on wood are in good shape with all the rain we've had. And she gave a report on the windows that cohabit, that they're coming in piecemeal. And I listened to a little bit of your meeting last night, and I guess Mr. Ames said that you can't get glass.
So.
And that building is all windows. So we're doing, doing the best we can with getting that building. Somebody today said to me, "It's ugly." I mean, well, it's not gonna stay that way. So those boarded-up areas are going to be windows. And it's not just like going to Home Depot and buying a window. They're all custom-made, unfortunately. So they're making them as the measurements dictate. And that was the report of the Finance and Law Subcommittee.
Motion to accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the subcommittee.
Is there a second? Did I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, non-opposed, so voted. New business, school committee planner?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's more for information for the school board. But as we try to do on a yearly basis, is put out a planner so we know when we have meetings scheduled per month. You'll notice that Mrs. Devine and I have added a school committee recognition at night, which we're planning for October 27. And we've also identified the presentations that we plan to have on a monthly basis. So please review the schedule, and this is what we are planning for this fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. We don't need to accept that or anything back? Okay, unfinished business, job descriptions.
The third reading is, Madam Mayor, will be roll call vote on the first two, please.
Okay. Library media specialist on a third reading on a roll call vote, Mrs. Fagan?
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Chairman Souza?
Yes.
Motion passes. Speech-language pathologist, third reading, roll call vote, Mrs. Fagan?
Mr. Doherty? Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Chairman Souza?
Yes.
You don't have to vote on these right now.
No, the motions are passing unanimously. Thank you. And then director of STEAM curriculum.
Motion to suspend the rules and go to the third reading so we can have this in place.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, non-opposed, so voted. On third reading, roll call vote, Mrs. Fagan?
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
And Mr. Sousa?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Chromebook user policy, second reading.
Motion to suspend the rules and go to the third reading?
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded to suspend the rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, non-opposed, so voted. On third reading, roll call vote, Mrs. Fagan?
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Palowski?
Yes.
Mr. Fiori?
Yes.
Mrs. Fagan votes yes. Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Almeida?
Yes.
Mr. DeMello?
Yes.
Chairman Souza?
Chairman Souza?
Yes. Sorry, I was, my underst, I was talking to my understudy for a second.
Mentoring, he's mentoring. Thank you, motion passes. Any action item review?
The only, the only, I don't have any change. Just want to remind the committee, next Thursday, and Madam Mayor, your, your presence next Thursday at 11 o'clock at the Oakland Complex for the dedication for Mayor Johnson.
Yes, very exciting.
And I know we're coordinating that here and with you. That'll come off the list as soon as we, that happens. And we have the Mulcahy Media Center, that will be coming up in October. Working with the superintendent after this meeting to, you know, the exact date. And then, oh, we can strike the fourth one down, the MCAS policy. We just passed it for a first reading. So with a motion, I'd like to strike the MCAS policy reviews of the ad hoc committee.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Seconded.
On the motion, all those in favor? Opposed, the ayes have it. We'll strike that one, 8/11/21, Wendy. And I think the rest of them are still on here. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, you're welcome. Press time, do we have any questions from the press? Okay. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, non-opposed, so voted. Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
Thank you, have a great week, everyone.